Four, yeah.
Yeah.
Three is a four.
Is, uh, Duffy coming?
I haven't heard from anybody. Good evening. Welcome to the March 5th, 2013 zoning board of adjustments meeting. The Gostown zoning board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and three alternates. If anyone is interested in serving on the zoning board, please see Brian Rose for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from the applicants, the abutters, and affected parties, and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed, and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Brian Rose at the town hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application, such as the situation we have right now. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the zoning board of adjustments tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within thirty days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. So at this time, I would like the board and staff to introduce themselves.
Joe Feminow, alternate.
Kathy Hooton, chairman.
Gail Lebrecht.
Vivian Blondo.
And I'm Brian Rose. I'm the planning and zoning administrator.
Do you want to specify that Joe will be a voting alternate?
I do. Since there are four, since there are three members, elected members, we are going to appoint Joe as the fourth voting member this evening. And again, as I mentioned in the opening statement, where we do not have a full five-member board, you have your choices as to whether to continue the hearing or to proceed, and in order for the appeal to be approved, three of us must vote in the affirmative. So with that being stated, I would like to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the February 5th, 2013 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from February 5th.
I guess I'll, you're gonna second it?
I'll second it because you're the minute taker, but I'll second it. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Against? Abstaining?
Yep.
One. The vote is three, zero, one. Okay. So as we will take the agenda in order tonight, the first hearing is Steve Fortin, owner-applicant, is seeking a special exception to add an accessory dwelling unit within the interior confines of his existing single-family home. Section 312, Table 86 of the Gostown zoning ordinance states that accessory dwelling units are allowed by special exception in the agricultural district. The property is located at 25 Coriander Way, map 9, lot 36-7-29, in the agricultural district. And I would assume that this must be Mr. Steve Fortin.
That is me.
Mr. Fortin, would you like to present your case to the zoning board as to your request?
Just one question that I have, I'm...
Oh, excuse me. One thing. I'll entertain a motion regarding regional impact?
So moved?
Second.
That you, that there's no regional impact? Okay. Motion is made that this does not affect regional impact. And seconded by Gail?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Votes four, zero, zero. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Fortin.
It's okay. I just have one question. I'm a little confused about the four members. Does that mean this cannot be approved?
No, no.
Okay.
In order for it to be approved, three of us have to vote in the affirmative. We, three have to vote yes. Four of us could vote yes.
Okay.
Four of us could vote no.
All right, gotcha.
If two vote yes and two vote no...
The motion fails.
The motion fails.
Okay.
Okay. So, and you have the decision to go with a four member tonight, or ask that it be continued until the next meeting when there are five here?
I think this is a fairly simple request, so I'm gonna say I'll, I'll put it before the four of you.
Okay. And, and let me, I'm just gonna take it one step further for clarity for you, is that if for any reason it does not go in your favor, then that the next meeting you have the right to request, uh, to rehear it.
Okay.
And we would entertain, just for everybody's knowledge, we'd entertain the rehearing, but it wouldn't be reheard until the following.
Gotcha.
So that's the process you're in right now.
Thank you very much for clarifying that for me.
You're welcome.
These legal terms are...
I know. It took a while for me to understand it, too.
What I'm hoping to do, I did submit prints for it. I did bring my full print of my basement, if anyone's interested in seeing it. Basically, what I'd have is a walkout basement, well, it will be. Right now, it's being used as a two-car garage. I intend to use half of that garage, plus about three-quarters of my basement, to make a small in-law apartment. I guess we call it accessory dwelling, right? In there. I have spoken extensively with Mr. Tessier on how to do it legally, how to make it all work with regards to codes, and we seem to have a good plan in place for approaching that. It will be around 600 square feet. What I'm trying to do is make it fit within, you know, use as much space as I can without making it obnoxious, so it's hard for me to say exactly how much space it's going to take, but it will definitely be way under the 650 maximum. It will be a full bathroom and a small kitchenette.
Is the, um, existing septic system, is that, will that support?
The septic system that I have is not designed for four bedrooms. I have a three-bedroom one. From what I understand, it was, though, designed at a time period in which the code required a little more than what they require now. But that being said, that's, I understand that I have to come up with a design, have that on file, and if the, uh, septic system fails, if and when it fails, we have to go according to the new design.
And that is not what I, I understand to be true.
Okay.
Just to clarify, I, I did speak today with Mike Ergo from the Department of Public Works, and he is the person who is responsible for septic systems and approv, approving from a town level. And I addressed this with him because I was concerned about it, and the statement that I got from him is that you do have to have an approval for a septic system that will accommodate a four-bedroom home. That, that would be the state's, the state's decision primarily, and it has to be approved at this town level also. So my, my thinking based upon that information is that I'm, I'm looking at conditioning it, conditioning the application, based upon the information that I received from Mr. Ergo today.
Okay.
I think that's what he was trying to say with what he said, but maybe he just didn't say it in the...
He said that, he said if he had an approval system that was on design there, that it, once it failed, then he would build it to a four-bedroom design.
Right. The design, the design has to be approved and by, by the state and by the town, and then it, the design goes on file and waits. There's no reason why you would tear out a perfectly working septic system.
It's two years old.
I, I understand. I think it's up to the state to decide what they're going to do.
Right. But that's, I think, what we've done on any other pro, uh, application such as this, where they've added a bedroom or done something and, and added an accessory dwelling unit. You get the, the design, and you get it approved by the state and by the town, and then it goes on file, and whenever the, the system fails, at the point where you're ready to replace it, you would replace it with that one that's on file. That way, we don't have to, you know, go out and say, now you have to have a whole redesign and all of this and that.
That makes sense, 'cause I think you were gonna say, why, about a system that's working before it fails?
Right. I mean, you're, you're adding a little bit of impact to the capacity of how that system would, you know, and how long it would take. It might shorten the lifespan of it because you're adding some, some use to it, but it may still, it may still last for eighteen, twenty years. Um, I've dealt with this, with the, with Mark Tessier several times, and, you know, I, I know that that information is pretty accurate.
'Cause I'm gonna get clarity on that.
And it seems to me, from what you had said, that that's not in conflict with what we're, what we're talking about.
But anyway, we can deliberate that afterwards. Well...
Speaking of septic, this is my designer, so he does have the septic plans, so...
Okay. Then I would suggest that he come to the sewer commission's meeting.
To the?
Sewer commissioners' meeting, the sewer commission meeting, perhaps, is next Tuesday or Wednesday, I think, the voting.
Does that have something to do with a septic system?
But anyway, um, yes. But anyway. That's a concern that, that I see, is that it doesn't have a septic system that, that, can handle a four-bedroom.
Right.
According to the state standards, and I understand the argument here.
Can I make a statement on that, though?
Sure.
I mean, in the house right now, it's my wife. Now, obviously, you folks don't know, you know, I could sell next week, and, you know, I understand that, but I'm not doing this for any purpose of resale value. I'm doing this for my family. I built the house my hot, myself, and I plan on staying there. I have my wife, myself, and a seven-year-old boy, so one of our bedrooms is just being used as an office right now. The septic isn't even close to being used to capacity even right now. And like I said, it's a two-year-old septic system, so, I mean, I completely understand your concern. You want to do it the legal way, but from my standpoint is, I understand the requirement of having, you know, an approved septic, but to, to request me to tear up my whole, my two-year-old septic system for three people living in the house with the potential of maybe two more coming in, um, it's still not going to be up to capacity even once that happens.
I can, I can see where if you do have an approved four-bedroom plan, that has been approved and is on file, that if your septic that is approved for three bedrooms does not handle your intended new occupancy, that we would condition that you would have to upgrade your septic system to the four...
One hundred percent.
To the four-bedroom plan.
And I agree with that. I would agree with that one hundred percent.
As a condition of approval, I think that works just fine.
I do, too.
If you wanna, you know, put that on there. What, I was just trying to make sure that it was understood, is, is we do this with any, whether they come to the ZBA for, for, you know, a special exception or not, if someone were just putting an addition on their home and didn't need a special exception or whatever, they were adding two or three or four bedrooms or whatever they wanted to add, we would require the same thing. We would require them to come up with a design, and whenever that system failed, that would be the design that would be moved into place, you know, and replace, and replace the old septic system.
And it makes sense.
Madam Chair, from what I, I hear is that it's a three-bedroom septic system, and he's only gonna have three bedrooms.
Right. But the, that's right. But that he has, he has a, he has a, his house is appraised at three bedrooms.
We would not count it that way, because there's a bedroom, even though it's being used by, as an office, you have to count it as a bedroom.
I see. Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
'Cause it has a closet.
But as far as use, you know, as far as use, I'm still under capacity, you know, even after this is being used fully, it's still, it's still less than, you know, a family that would be using all three of those bedrooms.
Do you have any further questions? All right, well, let's go through the criteria for a special exception. The specific site is an appropriate location for such use, being consistent with the town's current master plan, because, and you say there is already a family home in a home with an accessory dwelling on Coriander Way. Okay.
I, I was confused by some of these questions. I'll be perfectly honest with you.
You're not the first. The size and frequency of use will not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood, because?
I, I didn't bring my notes. I didn't think I was gonna have to do that.
Because you stated this will not change the footprint of the house. And you're not looking to incorporate, per se, a business or whatever in there, so...
No.
This will not create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians in a manner that cannot be ameliorated, because, and Mr. Fortin said, this is a dead-end road with very little traffic, there will be no need to park on the street. The fourth criteria, the proposed location is of sufficient size to allow for adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of use, because it is a three-acre lot. The proposed location is of sufficient size to plow for appropriate buffers of this use to adjacent properties, because there's no additional footprint to the house. And you also stated, um, on other issues and matters, um, relevant, this should not impact the neighborhood. We cannot foresee any reason this would pose a difficulty for anyone. So based upon the five criteria and the answers of Mr. Fortin, um, I think we're fine with having spoken with you, Mr. Fortin?
No, we're not.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry.
You said something about possibility of two more people moving in, and that there wouldn't be a need to park on the street. How big is your driveway, and would these two people both be having cars?
No. And they're absolute, my, my driveway is 160 feet long, and... Now, I've got plenty of driveway.
Okay. And the, the two people moving in?
There would not be two cars.
There's a picture in the staff report, if you can turn to the next page.
Part of what you're not seeing also, part of my plan on this, is to build another separate garage that would be at the end of my driveway. So the three potential cars that would be there, see, right now, I, I drive a pickup, and it doesn't fit into my garage. So the, there's a lot going on with this that you folks don't know. So all cars will be parked in a garage, so, and then it's still a huge driveway.
Pretty, pretty lot, huh? Pretty, yes. Sorry, Seth, do you have any more questions, Gail?
No.
Vivian?
I don't know if there's any abutters.
I'm gonna get, do you have any more questions of Mr. Fortin?
No, I don't have any questions of Mr. Fortin.
Joe, do you have any more questions, Mr. Fortin?
I have no questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fortin. Are there any abutters?
Robert isn't a butter.
You are, you're an abutter?
I'm a butter.
And a butter, and kind of what the...
He's big as a butter.
He's still a septic, so...
You're our man. Step right up. And could you please introduce yourself and spell your name?
Robert Wyke. I live at 40 Pastor Drive, Gostown, and I abut Mr. Fortin both on Coriander and across his back lot, back portion of his lot. Uh, what I did, I have no objections to his, to his request with the board. Basically, what I did is I actually prepared a, a septic design as a potential replacement system in event of failure, as an increase in intended use to what he's proposing to do with the property. So this plan actually shows, I can leave a copy, two copies with the board if you like. It's actually going to Megan Terrio...
Yeah.
...in the morning for, for a preview.
I spoke to Mike Ergo today, so that's where, we're at the same place.
But anyways, it shows the existing systems that, that is there now, and it just shows the, again, the proposed increase in intended use, the, the handle, the capacity. The lot does meet the, the minimum requirements by state specifications for lot loading, so there's, there's no impact, and there's no waiver's gonna be submitted for the increase in intended use.
And just out of curiosity, what is, what is the size? Is it, is it a four-bedroom that you built it up to?
It's actually larger than a four-bedroom. What it is, it's a, it's a three-bedroom with a studio apartment, which, if it was a four-bedroom, it would be an additional 150 gallons. In this case here, it's an additional 225 gallons, 'cause I'm calling it a studio apartment.
'Cause you have a kitchen along with that, right?
Yeah.
Another kitchen.
Exactly. And I don't, I don't see any reason why, you know, Megan, if she has any issues, she would let me know on this anyways, and we'd make the adjustments, whatever she would look forward to, and I don't anticipate any problems at this stage either, because we're putting, we're locating the system in its original location, where it was initially approved by, by the town and by DES.
Well, that would be good, then. He should have that on file.
Absolutely.
Quickly, so that, that's excellent, because it's, it was, it was a concern.
Yeah. And there is other, there is another property in the neighborhood, and it's also a duplex, so it, what he's doing would be consistent with what's, what's in the neighborhood already. Other than that, I have nothing further to say.
Good. Well, thank you very much for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
That's very nice. Did you have any questions? I'm so sorry. Are there any other abutters or any other interested parties? Mr. Fortin, did you have anything further to say?
You for your time. Break down.
All right. Being done, I will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate.
I'll make a motion to approve. I have no deliberation.
I second.
I'd like to make an appro, a motion to approve with the condition that if the three-bedroom septic system fails, that it will be replaced with a septic system adequate.
That's fine. That's, that's the condition.
I just seconded the flat-out approval, because it seems like that's just part of the process.
The condition's already there, yeah.
But I'd like that condition added, and it'll be adequate to the amount of bedrooms in the home that was presented. At that time. And not presented, but at, at the time, 'cause he may end up having more bedrooms. Next thing you know, they go new garage.
The reason I, I felt there was no discussion, the reason I felt there was no discussion is done within the compounds of the home and everything.
Right.
And I understand about your condition for the four-bedroom thing. All right, fine.
And there is no increase to the footprint of the home, so that's, and Joe, that's how you feel, too.
Yeah, exactly. I, I think there's much question.
Okay. All those, yeah, there's a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, zero. Abstained, zero. The vote carries four, zero, zero. It was a good, good gamble on your part, Mr. Fortin. Thank you both very much. Okay. The second one, William Carachuelo. Owner-applicant is seeking a variance to convert the existing second floor of an existing garage to a single-family dwelling unit, which would create two dwelling units on one property, whereas Section 372 of the Gostown zoning ordinance allows multiple dwelling units on a single lot only as part of an open space development under Section 13.5 of the zoning ordinance. The property is located at 902 Black Mountain Road, map 2, lot 18-4, in the agricultural district. And tonight, we have before us?
William Carachuelo.
And I'm Karen Olson. I go have a tape with Willie.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to find no regional impact.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four, zero, zero. You have no regional impact, your application. Okay. So tell us why you're here.
Well, I'm gonna here and speak for Willie just a little bit if I can. He's asked me to come and talk to you, and I do thank you for your time today.
Could you give me one more time for you?
Karen Olson, O-L-E-S-O-N.
Got it.
Willie has a house out on Black Mountain Road. It's a little cape, and a couple of years ago, he built a garage that has a second story on it. He and I go have a tape there now. And what he would like to do is finish the upstairs of the garage with the intention of he and I moving into that area. He has a brother and a mother who live together in Sun Cook right now, and his brother has been taking the sole responsibility of looking after his mom, and he would like to take a little bit more of that responsibility himself. So we'd like to move into the garage, finish it off as a one-bedroom studio-type home, and have his mom and his brother move into the main house. It gives us a couple of different things. Gives us the ability to help take care of his mom. Also, it gives us the ability to shut the place down and go whenever we want, not have to worry about the place being abandoned, so to speak, someone would be on the property. And in keeping with the area, the house is sort of an antique cape-looking house, and the garage that he built is intended to look like an antique barn. We're trying to keep the theme going in the area. So there really is, as Mr. Fortin has no impact on, on the footprint, whatever, I can't really see how it's gonna bother anybody, because we have two entrances, as it is now, into the property. There's a U-shaped driveway that goes towards the garage, in front of the garage, in front of the house, and then back out to the road. Additional cars, there may be one additional car, perhaps two for a short period of time, but Willie's mom's getting a little bit older. I'm not sure how long she's gonna be driving, and she doesn't go very far anyways, so that's really what we're intending to do. Hope to get a variant to do so.
Any questions? The big question of the evening is?
Do you have it for three bedrooms, Eve?
Yeah, I have a three-bedroom.
The septic thing again?
Yes. Yes.
The way I understand it, I, I do need a new design, okay? But I guess a lot changed a few years ago, and you cannot replace a septic with an original one. You also, if, if Save Mine failed and I wasn't doing this, I would also need a new design.
Anyways.
That's my understanding, right.
Right. But I know that because I need to increase it, I need to have one that can handle the more usage.
Is the garage going to have plumbing?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
So, you're going to have to put plumbing in?
Yes.
It obviously doesn't connect now to a septic?
No.
So, you're going to have to do that?
It's the same thing as Mr. Fortin. I have to have-
And how old is your septic?
A new septic design, since the house was built, 25 years.
The construction is 19, revised in 1980.
No, we built that in 88.
There must be a new one.
Right. But it, I haven't changed it since. And then it's always, always been two people living in the house.
Yeah, there's never been more than two people living in the house.
Right. But it's, it's assessed as a three-bedroom.
I understand that, yeah.
And that's why you have a three-bedroom in there.
We're in the same vote that Mr. Fortin is.
Yeah, you should've spoken to Mr. Weick.
Well, we're sort of, we're sort of the same thing, where our understanding was that we could go forward as long as we had a septic design approved and ready to go in the event the current one failed. That's our understanding of it.
I certainly would be fair on that one.
Yeah.
What's gonna be the size of that?
60 by 40.
There's a mini-wall that comes out six feet, though.
1,200 square feet, yeah.
Thank you.
But it's all within the current footprint?
Yes.
Yes, but I won't have to add anything.
It's currently the biggest walk-in closet any woman could ever want.
You're gonna make it smaller?
I, I unfortunately, when I moved into his house, I had a house full of furniture, too, so it's kind of there.
Thanks to have to go outside to get to your closet, though. Are you gonna have outside stairs, or?
Uh, yes, to get approved, there was probably something around the back.
Yeah, we'll have to put in a CR case to get a second means of a grass, definitely.
And then inside the garage?
There's already a stairs going in, yeah. As you walk in through the door, door, and then going.
Does the board understand the difference between the two different applications? Okay? The reason why we're going for a variance on this one and a special exception on the other one?
Yes. You made me think for a minute.
Would you say? Okay, now, does anyone have any more questions to the Carachuelos?
You like that, huh?
I do. I love that. Carachuelo. Okay, that's why I thank the two of you. And I'm going to now see if we have any other people in the audience who'd like to speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any abutters?
Yes.
Voice before the hand.
Aye.
Good evening. Could you please introduce yourself?
Michael Switzer.
Could you spell your last name?
S.W.I.T.Z.E.R.
Good evening. And you are here?
I'm an abutter at 896 Back Mountain Road.
Okay. And you are here to speak in favor of this application?
Yeah.
Okay, and so you feel that this would not be detrimental to?
No, because it has its own entrance from the, from the road.
Yeah.
Driveway. It has a house-type door for entrance, so it's not gonna change any appearance to the neighborhood. I don't see any problem with having somebody living above the garage, like a gambrel with the garage underneath it.
And so there is absolutely nothing with what they're trying to do that would be any objection to you at all?
No, there's not.
Well, we thank you very much for coming here on their behalf, and I'm sure they're very thankful, too.
No more questions?
I don't know.
That was too easy.
You'd like to be questioned, huh?
I've been listening.
Does anyone have any? You live on the right side of them with the left side.
If you're facing them, right side.
No, I think, I think we're all set.
Usually, they're pretty short on questions. It's usually up to you what you wanna say versus them asking.
If I was, if I was opposed to it, I'd have a long list, right? Well, thank you very much for hearing me out.
Well, thank you for coming. We very much appreciate it. And sir, you raised your hand in the back?
I'm an abutter.
Yes, could you come?
Find out what's going on, that's all. I don't have any questions.
Okay. And could you tell me your name and which property your address is?
Fred Gilligan.
Could you spell the Gilligan?
G-I-double-L-I-G-A-N.
Yeah.
914 Back Mountain Road.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gilligan, for being here. All right, so now that we've heard everybody, do you have anything further that you would like to say to the board before we close the public hearing?
Yeah, when I came to find out. And I have a very big garage, too, so.
No, that's right.
I keep myself.
I just wanna make sure you're here.
Okay, good. All right, there being none, I will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate.
I have nothing to deliberate.
Just the septic system design we're gonna put into the approval, if we approve, is it, I'll make a motion to approve?
A second.
Okay, we make a motion to approve the application with the same condition as the previous application, is that if the septic system fails-
I think they need a new septic system, don't they?
Well, if, they're gonna, at the time that it fails, at the time that it fails, then a new septic's plan, approved septic plan must be-
On file.
On file. That is in conformance with the dwelling, dwelling units, dwelling units.
Is that good?
Do you, do you understand that?
Yes, yes, yes.
But does that mean we can get a permit just by?
No. The way is, it's got nothing to do, but the way Mr. Cassier explained it to me was, if I don't get a septic design, I can't get a building permit.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So, basically, it's what you're trying to-
So, basically, he has-
That's the condition.
Basically, he has to have a new-
And we could add to it in a building permit.
I think it's basically that he needs a new septic design, right?
I think, I think, yeah, I think we're all covered.
The condition is that, that he gets a new septic design.
I think our, our, our motion stands as we've stated it to be, okay? Okay, so, any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero, zero. Motion carries four, zero, zero. Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Glad you did.
Sorry, we didn't have more questions.
Enjoy your family, that's a very-
This was the first step, I wasn't gonna get a septic design.
That's right.
Who wants to pay for that until you're sure?
That's the next step.
I'm sure that will be lovely for your family and for your mother.
You wanted to make sure we could get this before we even told her. And I made him swear not to tell her until I'm in the room with them, because I wanna see the look on her face. She's gonna be so happy to have both of her sons right there.
It's good to be able to boys, two boys.
A mom's dream.
Great story.
Good night.
Bye, thanks for coming again.
Family's important.
It is. Okay, so that being said, I don't think there's really much new business.
Don't close yet.
Okay, I'm not closing.
I just have one item of business, and that is, actually, two items. Gail brought up earlier that there are trainings available typically throughout the year. One of them is available is the OEP training, the OEP conference, Office of Energy and Planning. That's what the OEP stands for. And that'll be coming up. I don't recall the date, but I, Derek had said that the start date for when we can be able to register for it is coming up on March 21st. And I think it's in either late, late April or early May, is when they're doing it. And so, that's, that's gonna be a one-day training. And I would encourage anybody and everybody on the board to sign up for that. The town will pay your registration, we have money in our budget for it. Reason I would encourage you to do that is because we have a fairly young board that hasn't been on, you know, zoning board of adjustment for a very long time. Many of our members, Joe's been here for about a year now, same with a few others.
I'm the longest one, and it's only been since 2006.
Right. And so, it would be very, very good to go and get some training.
Where's this gonna be held?
It'll be in Manchester at the Radisson, I believe.
When did you say it's gonna be posted online?
I think it's by like March 21st. I think is when they're gonna be doing that.
Is this a weekend class?
No, it's a one-day conference.
It's usually on a Saturday.
I mean, on the weekend. Is it a Tuesday, is that?
No, it's Saturday.
Is it on the Saturday?
Those are usually on a Saturday, yeah.
Okay, I, I'm not sure. I've, I've not been to an OEP one yet. But I think I might plan on this year. I, I don't know, I'll have to see what's my schedule's like, but. That's available. And then later on in the year, there will be the law lecture series, as well as, I don't know how interesting this one might be for, for zoning board members, but it's the New Hampshire Planners Association Conference. It's a two-day conference, and that's up in Meredith. And that will be actually coupled with the Maine and Vermont Planners Associations, because it's the Northern New England chapter of the American Planning Association. So, that one might be interesting to also keep in mind and maybe attend. I don't have infinite amount of dollars in my training budget, but I'll try to, you know, keep you guys apprised of how much availability we do have to be able to attend those things.
Do we save any from last year?
I wish I could do that, because I've not had money spent. I've had to leave it hanging there, because we just, I just haven't been able to go myself. And it's been very little desire to go from board members, whether it be zoning or planning board members. So, I've had to leave money just hanging there where it was available and could've been used. So, that's number one. Number two, May 7th, our upcoming zoning board meeting. I think that's the date in May? Yes, that's the first Tuesday in May. It's gonna conflict with our Penarville project charrette that's coming to town that we're planning. It's a five-day charrette, and we're gonna be doing that May 3rd through the 7th. So, the last day of the charrette will have a pretty major presentation on that same night. And so, I would like to have the board entertain moving the zoning board meeting to the 14th, which would be the next Tuesday, so that I can not have a conflict.
May 3rd through 7th, is a charrette, charrette, what is it?
It's a charrette. We're, we're actually gonna call it a Planet Palooza, but. It's gonna be a five, five-day planning workshop for the Penar- for the whole Penarville area. We're coming up with a master plan and a smart code for Penarville. Smart code will be like a zoning ordinance amendment that will basically be like an overlay zone kinda thing that will cover the Penarville area and.
Are they still looking for volunteers on it?
That'll be good, that'll be good.
Yeah.
Are they still looking for volunteers on it?
We've got, we've got our committee set, but anybody who wants to join in and do any kinda help with it, you're welcome to, to come to our meetings, you're welcome to, especially to this Planet Palooza thing. We would definitely love to have as much input as possible from any of the community members, whether they're from Goffstown or Penarville or anywhere, even, you know, people from outside. I've got people from, I've got a planner from Bedford and a planner from Manchester, both on this committee, that are also helping to give input, because they're both abutting towns to Penarville.
Yes.
There's cities and towns and municipalities to Penarville. And it just so happens that the planner that works in Bedford, she lives in Penarville, and the planner that works in Manchester had done some work previously. You know, her, some of her jobs have been in Penarville, and so they both sort of know the area a little bit. And, but, you know, anybody-
Could get the planner from Hookson, huh?
Well, she's already busy with her own project that they got a grant for, too, so I didn't feel like- And plus, she's not really an abutting town to Penarville. So, that was, that's the focus of our project, and I didn't feel like Hookson necessarily would've been the, the most meaningful input.
What's being planned?
What's being planned? Well, we're gonna come up with just vision for Penarville, what we feel, how we feel like the future of Penarville should be, how to make it more walkable and sustainable, how to, you know, incorporate, you know, all the different things of, you know, getting, getting people to use alternative modes of transportation, bicycles, and, and, you know, making sure that there's adequate connectivity and trails and whatever you can think of that Penarville may be lacking. Make, focus on the economic corridor, obviously, and maybe figure out how to do facelifts on the, on the buildings. When redevelopment occurs, how does that redevelopment occur? Do you put the buildings up by the street, or do you put 'em back and show the sea of asphalt in front? Or, you know, all those types of things that, you know, planners sort of look at in site planning. It should be a fun, fun event and project.
Maybe even a roundabout.
I'm really excited about it. You guys, you guys will see more definitely about it in the papers and in, and, you know, we're gonna set up a Facebook page. It'll be one of the first ones that the town does for something like this anyway. I know the library has their own Facebook, Facebook page and maybe police, but I don't, I've never been on that.
This is the most fun.
Yeah. So, this will be allow people to go on and, you know, make comments on Facebook or on, on, on things that they've seen or, you know, whatever, how their experience went.
Is there gonna be anything on change in zoning or anything?
Yeah, there, a whole code for the Penarville area. We're gonna come up with a whole code for them.
And that is?
So, it's gonna be like a form-based, form-based code, if you've ever heard that terminology. It deals with less regulation on the type of use and more focuses on how the buildings are placed on the lot and what their size and shape, how they relate to each other next door to one another. And then also, you know, instead of like a setback line where you could build anywhere within that-
Setback?
Setback line area, you have a build-to line where you have to build it a certain distance within a certain zone from the street, so that way you have a better street presence and, you know, kinda give ability for people to, you know, monitor the street. It adds to safety, you know, when people have eyes on the street, then, you know, you, you're cutting down on crime, because, you know, somebody's not gonna be out there, you know, beating someone up or whatever, and maybe doing, committing a crime if they're being watched by somebody, you know? Like, if some, if they can see somebody's window and they can, you know, tell that somebody's looking out, they're not gonna do something, so. I mean, all those types of concepts are gonna be considered.
And now that you have all that new infrastructure, this is a perfect time to take a look at it.
Take a good look at the school traffic also on that Main Street.
Yeah, and, you know.
And where is this going to be held? Is it gonna be held at the school? Do you know where they're gonna meet?
We are still determining the location. I've got a few, we're trying to do it in a local storefront area, where they will actually have a, a studio set up where they're, you know, they're gonna be here for five days. We gotta put 'em up somewhere. And we're gonna essentially get one of the, hopefully get one of the local business owners to- And we're gonna essentially get one of the, hopefully get one of the local business owners to loan us their space and let them set up shop in, in that space and then. That's one of our possible locations and maybe, maybe the strongest one. Fashion Bug, I've been looking at that one and I'm, and I've asked the, the property owners to consider, you know, letting us use it. So, depending on the size of the space, we will end up having to determine whether or not to do the major big presentations in that space or like at a place like St. Ace or something where, you know, we can accommodate a lot of people that, that might come to this, so.
I know when we, when I was on a master plan committee years ago, that we utilized the school.
The elementary school?
The, not the middle school.
Oh, the middle school.
We, we utilized the, the new one. The middle school and that's where we did that master plan. I think it was like two or three before, so. And we, and it was a town facility, so.
Yeah, and, and, you know, if, if it's the elementary, I, I've thought about the elementary school in Pinnardville, the Bartlett School. The only problem with that one is there's not that much parking or available around there. And their parking lot is maybe, I don't know, thirty or forty spaces tops.
Is there any space where the Jewish signs used to be?
I had thought about that one as well, but I've, in talking to the building inspector, I'm not sure how viable that space is as far as safety wise. So I don't know if there would be issues with that, trying to go into that space.
I'm sure wherever you're going to have it, it will be a good place. It will accommodate hopefully a lot of people that will come to this because it's an important part of our town. It brings in a lot of our commercial industry, which offsets our property taxes, so it would be to everybody's benefit to attend.
I'm glad that they're looking at Pinnardville.
Yeah.
The great, the great thing is, is, I mean, this, this is a fifty thousand dollar grant that came from the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. You know, we didn't have, we don't really have to pay hardly any money for this.
Oh, so we give pizza.
We were required a, a twenty, twenty percent match or twenty, twenty-five percent match. But then, well, maybe it was only twenty. But then we're only required to pay cash twenty-five percent of that match. So, the rest of it can be in kind and what have you. So volunteer hours are gonna mostly load up. And then, thanks to the Gothstown Industrial Corporation, that, they gave us a three thousand dollar amount of money to go towards our cash match, which basically covers
The cash match?
Almost the entire thing. So, we might have to come up with a couple hundred bucks. So, it's really nice. So, you know, this, this project we never would have been able to do without the grant funding and, and the availability. So, I was excited that we, we got the grant when we.
Sure, good job.
Nice.
Nice job.
Anyway, so I need the board to consider changing the date to the fourteenth. So that way I don't have a conflict on that night and I can attend.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna do one.
Yeah, please.
I'll make a motion that we, we have the meeting on the fourteenth.
On the thirteen. They're kidding.
Yeah, I might have sewer that night, but that's at six o'clock.
You do, and I checked, and it would be six o'clock, so in fact, that might work out really good for you because you can meet with them and then head on over here afterwards.
That would be my only objection, but I'm not even gonna object to it, so. Having that said, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, none. Obseing, none. Motion carries four, zero, zero. And Patty will let everyone, all the members and the alternates know that the May meeting has been changed and
Yeah, we'll send it out.
We'll let it, we'll let them know at the April meeting.
Yeah.
April meeting.
Yeah, we can remind everybody and plus we'll have new members, so we'll, we'll make sure to remind everyone then too. So, we may have new members.
Hopefully, yeah.
If, if the alternates get appointed, I guess it'll just be the same old people, right?
And even if they're gone, there'll still be an alternate.
I guess I should say same young people too, right?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed. Motion carries four, zero, zero. Goodbye. We will see you next month, first Tuesday. In April.